Early, early.
One minute?
I guess.
Okay, we will, um, no binding action was taken during executive session and the regular session of the city council will now continue. Uh, the next item is roundtable. I have a few quick ones. I think the crews did amazing job picking up the limbs around town with the storm. I love the fact that the dump was open additional hours. There were 212 visitors on one day. Can you imagine that dump, 212 visitors?
It saved our crews a lot of time too.
You should see that.
Was that after the storm?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm just very happy that our crew worked.
See if he could get help out there earlier.
Our crews worked hard. The dump was open extra hours. That was a good decision. Um, congratulations to Greg Martin who will be appearing in the Kansas Shrine Bowl. It's the Shrine Bowl, um, it, uh, I'm just gonna read it. It says Governor Brownbeck has proclaimed eight, July 29th, 2017, a Shrine Bowl Day in the state of Kansas in honor of the 44th Annual Shrine Bowl Football Game to be played on that day in El Dorado at BG Products Veterans Stadium of the County Community College. So congratulations to Greg Martin. Um, the pieces of the gym floor were compliments of the Alumni Association. If you don't want them from the old high school, please give them to someone from Marysville High that would like them, but that was a nice gift from the Alumni Association. I just wanna get, give a little thank you to the Jolly Jog-a-thon. I helped with that and Cleve Wallstrom and Moni, they do an excellent job. There's hundreds of people from out of town that are athletes that participate in this and this is the second year I helped, so I just wanna thank them for doing that event in Marysville. I also wanna thank Sarah Morrison for the books that she donated to the council as well as some committees, so thank you, probably Kestner House Foundation Board as well as Sarah Morrison for doing that. And the last thing I'm gonna say is I met with the AmeriCorps group that was here working on the pantry. I met, I believe, eight of them. They said they made great strides. I'm gonna volunteer at the pantry this Thursday, so I should see all the painting being done. Very nice group of people, all having good servants hearts. They're from LA, Minnesota, New York, so, and it looks like they worked really hard. So, thank you for, um, supporting. They said to thank you for the pool passes, so thank you for doing that for them and I think they really enjoyed being in Marysville. Said it was a nice community. With that being said, Keith, you're up.
Good to be back for a bit, so that's why I got.
We're glad you're back. All right, Bill?
I'd just like to thank all the city employees also for the landfill being open and the job they did picking limbs up.
Okay, Donnie?
Well, I wanna congratulate Austin for surviving his first year with us.
One year, that's right. How old are you?
June 20th.
First anniversary. Surviving, brilliantly surviving. Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, Todd?
Um, I could've brought it up under police and fire, I guess, but I kinda thought, I figured I'd hold it. We've, we've been working on the, um, issues with Keystone Road, whether it's, belongs to the city or belongs to the county, et cetera. Um, is whether it's a dedicated road. Eighth Road, um, from south of the highway, is that a 50% county, 50% city road doing the, Eighth Road, south of Rhodey's?
Oh.
I'm going that way.
Yeah, township.
Is it half township?
Half township, half city.
Half township and half city?
Yeah.
Do we patrol it?
Oh, yes.
Yes. To get, yeah.
That's not uncommon. We patrol out of Dave's Body Shop. Outside we patrol the, really the vision, just because if we know something happened.
There's some people out there apparently got the impression that we don't patrol it because it's not in the city or whatever, or that it's only half city. I don't know.
We have to because Eighth Road is ours, so we have to try and.
So, but you can, and since you're deputized, you can take it in either direction.
Correct.
And that's kinda what I explained to them. Um, so they, they had some concerns about people coming from outside of town really hauling and not, not letting off the gas when they crest there by, um, Heights Avenue, heading, heading northbound, so I don't know if that's something too where we could look at maybe putting the speed trailer out there at some point. I don't know if that'd be worthy or not, but I basically told them I'd bring it up and confirm that it was in fact something that we are patrolling and does matter. It's one of those, I think, a field on the edge of the community, a lot of people feel like they get less attention paid, so.
Of course.
It's not my award, but concerned anyway.
Anything else?
That's it.
Vicki?
I wanna thank Streets Department, Water and Sewer Department, because that break that was down at Third and the Highway, that was a lot going on and that's a lot of manual labor. That took a lot of work for those guys. It was hot and I think they worked around the clock to get that repaired and the section of pipe they took out had big ol' long cracks in them and, um, we're gonna resolve that with our, with, like, like Kevin said, you know, we need to get on it. We need to get on it so that we don't have those anymore, because that is very intensive labor to dig those pipes out. It's a lot. So I just wanna thank those guys. It's hard work. I hear people saying, well, I see somebody standing on a shuttle, but those guys were in the, down in that, down in that hole which was over their head, I don't know how, 10 feet, 6 feet, but it is a lot of manual labor down in there to repair those pipes.
Couple feet of gunk.
And gunk. Yeah, they're standing in it. They're standing in it. So I wanna say thank you gentlemen for the work you did, uh, to get us back online there. Thank you.
Are those pipes we can send the cameras through and just check? I mean, is that something that?
Not through that.
Not through the force main.
It's high pressure.
Yeah, it's a black line.
Anything else, Vic?
That's it.
Debbie?
I have nothing.
Kevin?
I'm like Vicki, I just wanna thank the water and sewer guys, you know, they come in after hours to cut the street up and open it up, you know. I'm like Vicki, I'm glad we got our crews like we do, you know, just because it was...
They work hard.
They, they stayed right there and worked on it, you know, we got it back up. Austin on the other side of that, do we have enough pipe in case something like this happens again online?
In fact, uh, he was in the middle of placing an order to replace his 14-inch stock and he's about to make another order on 14-inch stock, so yeah, we had, we had a...
I know we had a piece there, that's why I was asked, 'cause I know the time before we had to go get some.
We, we are being prepared.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I wouldn't entertain a motion?
I, I got one more thing.
Okay.
Since, since the fuel prices are getting lower and lower, is, I mean, I brought this up several times in years past of contracting fuel while it's down where it's at, is that something that we continue to check into?
As far as, what do you?
Oh, I don't know. Contract 1,500 gallons, 2,000 gallons at a low price, so you don't have to continue to pay gallons of fuel at a higher price.
You were checking.
Checking, yeah, I'll check into it.
Okay, I wouldn't entertain a motion?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0. Chief, we're really glad you were here tonight.
Yeah, Chief.
There was a lot of questions. Roll call, please.
Baikman?
Present.
B. Singer?
Present.
Boss?
Present.
Echus?
Present.
Fry?
Present.
Gross?
Present.
Troller?
Present.
Throm?
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right, the first item is approval of minutes for the June 26 meeting. Does anyone have amendments?
I have an amendment here, uh, Mayor. On page four or five of the minutes, uh, near the bottom under executive session, it indicated that, uh, a request for executive session, uh, and in the motion carried unanimously, well, uh, in Mr. Fry's wisdom, he voted, uh, no, so it wasn't carried unanimously.
Is that true, Todd?
That is true.
Okay, so that should be changed to 6-1 with Todd Fry voting no.
Correct, it was reported in the advocate that way too.
Okay.
He wanted to go home.
Okay, uh, are there any other amendments? I would entertain a motion to approve as amended.
Move to approve the minutes of the, wait a second, sorry.
Second.
I'm sorry. She, we'd already had a motion?
Vicki made the motion. No, I didn't. Okay, sorry. Move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting, June 26, 2017, with amendment, with amendment as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? 8-0. All right, public comments, is there anyone in the audience that would like to come to the podium and speak? If so, you're given five minutes. You can say your name, address, and word. Okay, we'll move on to business and discussion items. The first one up is Dennis Mason.
I hope I thanked you for letting me come here this evening. I'm Dennis Mason. With me is, uh, very good bussing, Bill O'Toole, Kenny Kane, all members of the original Veterans Memorial, start of the whole process, the first members of it. In the year 2006, a nonprofit corporation was formed with the Mar, as the Marshall County Memorial Committee. It was comprised of seven different American Legion posts. Its purpose was to construct a memorial for veterans within the county. Funds were acquired by selling plaques of granite inscribed was the veteran's name and service information. The first year, approximately 1,300 were sold. Presently, there are about 3,000. Also contributing funding came from various veteran organizations and other businesses. The property was deeded by the state to the city for the sole purpose of having a veterans' memorial. Presently, after over 10 years of operation, it is becoming an obstacle of maintenance for the volunteers to support without outside assistance and now the necessity for reaching out into the community for support of the veterans' memorial has come. And it goes without saying, we all owe much to the veterans for their service to their country. Some gave all. At first, the plan presently funds already pleading for having to pay for the daily lighting of the memorial. The cost runs around $45 per month. It is my opinion, the possibility of the city of Marysville to take over that cost as there is a benefit to the city from tourism to the memorial, not to mention a chance for the city to show appreciation to the veterans. Um, and perhaps some of the new required update maintenance costs could be shared by the city, but tonight all I'm looking for is just one thing, electricity. In the near future, there will be a plan created to resolve the present issues and the city will be advised as to what will be needed to support. There will be others involved in the support as well. Second, as it is a county effort and operation, the government agency of Marshall County will be contacted for its support. Third, the remainder of needed funding will be solicited among private individuals and organizations. Thank you very much for your consideration and any questions.
Have you looked into solar lighting?
Uh, okay, yes, there are ways of cutting costs, but if, at this point, I'm not trying to, uh, look into that particular thing until after we decide whether or not the city is gonna take it over. If they do, I offer my services as consultants to, I've got two or three different ways to cut costs. Uh, well, uh, one of them would be to have lights on a switch, because right now they go on at about dusk and come up, uh, and go off in the, in the mornings, all night, that's a lot of electricity and that $45 a month is about the average cost of a whole home, you know, in full, in use, but, uh, that's one way would be just to put a simple switch on it, but that switch could be attached to a timer too that would bring, um, electricity up immediately and stay that way for, say, an hour and then just go off. Supposedly the people that turn it on just go back and shut it, turn it on again if they want to look more, but at least it'll have a time limit of what it would operate. Um, well, there's another way, just add a timer on the lights and have it go on, on when it gets dark in the evenings and then off about 10 o'clock at night, because, you know, I, I don't think there's many people that go in there after 10 o'clock just to see a flag or, you know, one of them things. Uh, maybe some other ideas too.
Would it be disrespectful in any way to have a lights off after 10 o'clock?
Yeah, I, I don't think it, well, there's only one light that wouldn't need to be there. A small light for the flag.
Okay.
And that, and that was been done by another, uh, organization that I was working with on this similar thing. Uh, they did go to the LED stuff completely and, and of course, in that instance, the city was paying for electricity too.
I think if we do take over that electricity cost, I think we ought to check into solar lighting ourselves.
Sure.
See what that would cost compared to that per year.
And I'd be glad to offer my services anywhere you want me to.
So right now, he's just wondering if we'd be willing to take it on and then proceed with whatever options we have?
Yeah.
And the council discussion?
I'll make a motion that we take over the lighting of the vet memorial for not more than $45 a month for six months and, and see where it goes from there.
Why don't we, I cannot, I, I don't know if we're gonna make that not more than $45 a month, because whatever the bill is, are you trying to say that you'll?
I think that there's other options they can get their money from. I think the city needs to set a deal to how much money we will spend on that.
Right, and if it's over that, then somebody else, they find funding someplace else.
How do you feel about that?
I, I'm agreeable with that, because I don't think after we're done with the national changes that need to be made, well, first of all, there's three lights out there. Two of them on tall poles quite a ways from the, uh, walls and it takes a lot of light because it has a long distance to travel and the, uh, that could be brought in and on a shorter pole where people could go to it and replace it with normal bulbs or high efficiency, new type, uh, lighting devices. And then the third one that's on the intersection is redundant because it's exactly on the same pole as the light pole is for that intersection, so it's, it's, it's redundant.
Okay, so your motion, Bill, was to pay up to 40, so you get the electric bill right now, right?
Apparently, is this correct? We get it in the mail directly from the power company?
It changes each month according to how many days it's on.
Oh, oh, wow, okay.
Okay.
There could be little variation. 43, is that an average?
45, 45 is on average, but sometimes it's 52 or 30.
Okay.
Days per month.
Okay.
So Bill's, Bill's motion was to only pay up to $45 for six months?
Right.
Was there a second? Okay, so are you okay with that?
I'll ask the gentleman here.
But we're, we're giving them the money as opposed to us taking over the bill.
Yes.
Okay, Bill? Okay, the consensus is it'd be okay.
So we, what we would do is we would, would we want them to submit a bill and then we pay up to $45 per month of that?
Just give them $45.
Just give them?
Just cut them a check.
Cut them a check for $45 and we can do that for six months? And then you guys, so any kind of changes in your electrical system will be on you guys at this point?
Okay, for the modifications of the existing system?
I guess, because the motion was just to pay $45 a month.
Uh, well, here, I'm in a little quandary, because right now, I'm, I'm of the impression that the power company has a flat rate for having an outside light, first, as perfect like you have on the farm.
Three lights on there.
Yeah, there's three.
Majority of it is for vandalism, I'm worried about.
For what?
For vandalism.
Oh, vandalism, okay, yeah.
I just wanna clarify what the motion is, that, that they...
Yeah.
The motion was just to pay you $45 a month for six months?
Okay.
That's what you, the motion is?
For six months.
That's what you made, right, Bill?
Mm-hmm. Why for just six months?
Six months.
Trial period or?
Trial period, see how it goes.
And, and are you expecting any modifications?
I think solar electric is the way to go, but, uh, this way it, it helps them out.
But they don't have the funds to pay for that, so they're coming back to us.
Then, then we'll see, it says right here, they're gonna look at other options.
Yeah, I get it.
And it's countywide, right? There's seven American Legion posts that...
There are what?
Seven different American Legion posts.
Oh, well, I, that's just...
Involved in the project.
That was just what I used as information to gather opinions.
So it's county, it's countywide.
Yeah, now, uh, they're not all countywide systems, some of them, I, it's just a number that I contacted in the county to find out what I could about the expenses that they shared with the, the, uh, the veterans. Um, some ended up in the city's jurisdiction, some was in the counties and in no case did they, did the veterans have to pay electricity.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure you understood what the motion is.
Yeah, I, I hear that and we've agreed, I guess, for a partial six-month trial.
Okay, uh, is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? 8-0, all right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Uh, the second item, uh, we're not gonna address because it has been withdrawn. So the third item on business and discussion items is ordinance number 1854.
Move to approve ordinance 1854, the standard traffic ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Baikman?
Yes.
B. Singer?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Echus?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Troller?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
8-0.
All right, the next item is the Resolution 2017 for a gap waiver.
Move to approve Resolution 2017 dash 01, the gap waiver.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? 8-0. And the next item is to amend the, uh, personnel policies and guidelines handbook to change about the shirts that we discussed last week.
Move to approve Resolution 2017 dash 02, to amend the personal handbook. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? 8-0. And the next item is to amend the, uh, personnel policies and guidelines handbook to change about the shirts that we discussed last week.
Move to approve Resolution 2017 dash 02, to amend the personal handbook. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? 8-0. Uh, not aware of any notices or hearings, so the next item is the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, I think I had some discussion items. Uh, I know one of the things, while I'm looking for it, um, I, I had a question, the chief isn't here tonight.
That's the appropriation.
Never mind.
Yeah, the consent agenda was a clerk's report, municipal judges' report and revenue expense.
No, I didn't have anything on that, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? 8-0. The next item is the appropriations ordinance.
I approve appropriations ordinance number 3654.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, discussion. Um, the second item, page 29, Ambassador Company, uh, books, my favorite book, programmed by the police, uh, what fund does that come out of? It's $480, I assume, is it for the Dare Project?
Yeah, it comes out of that special law enforcement fund. See that on page 28?
Okay, is that...
For $480.
Is that the one that the, only the chief has discretion to spend? Yes? Okay, okay. Then under community memorial health care, same page, uh, it lists, uh, prisoner care. I had a question. When we have a prisoner in custody and he requires treatment and has to go to the hospital, is that part of their reimbursement? The city doesn't absorb that, do they?
We are fully rely, we're fully liable for those people in our custody.
You think that should be a reimbursement expense?
Yes.
From the prisoner?
Yes.
I don't think it is, do you?
Okay, so if I throw a brick through a window so I can go have my teeth capped, if I'm in their custody and I require dental work?
Only, no.
Then I can get dental work done?
No, only if it's something you need to go to the hospital for.
It's more like if you did that and then you...
We'd take her to the desk.
Well, that's not, not emergency care.
Yeah, yeah. If you threw the brick and, and glass sprayed back into your face, severely incapacitating you, yes, you'd, you'd pay for that.
I think this person's incapacitating. Okay, then, uh...
$25 is pretty cheap, medical care.
I know it is, but I've seen the dentist come up in here and I've seen where we've gone, 'cause some guy forgot his medication or hadn't refilled it and we took him up to the hospital, paid $2,000 for an emergency visit and then got him his, uh, situlopram or whatever. Okay, um, the, under John Deere Financial, what were the six shirts? Circular saw, live traps, Keller engine, $843? What were the shirts for? Six shirts? Usually we buy those at identities, that they're city shirts.
It's, uh, Dave Hammett shirt and they're relatively inexpensive. He wears the, it's from Orson's. Uh, he wears a blue button-up shirt, actually looks really nice, and then we get it embroidered, not, uh, as expensive as it sounds. That's just one of those expenses in there.
Okay, and then, uh, Pony Express Veterinary Clinic euthanizing bored cats and dogs, $197. We had about six animals boarded, euthanized, and then one kitten we had cremated. Now, I don't understand why we are cremating and paying $50 to have an animal. We have had it euthanized and, I mean, I understand if we're afraid it has rabies and we don't want another animal to get a hold of it and become rabid, but they pretty well contain, don't they, the animals that they euthanize anyway? I mean, they don't just throw them out on the ground somewhere.
There's certain restrictions that we have to abide by and that's why some animals are cremated and some are not. I mean, that's, that's all I can say.
That's a state mandate?
State, state requires us to do a certain thing with certain animals, so we have to abide by that.
Okay. Um, do you know about that, Craig?
I'm not familiar.
Never, neither. There's certain animals that were required to cremate.
If they, if they might be infectious or something like that.
Hmm. I understand that, but we didn't used to do that. I mean, I don't know if new, new notices have come along or, you know, we used to handle that without...
We used to do a lot of things we don't do anymore.
I know that, but I don't understand why we're spending money if we don't have to... Okay, I guess that's all I have.
Craig, you wanna look up and get us a statute on that, so we understand it?
Sure.
Thanks.
That's all I have.
Anything else? Okay, so we had a first and a second roll call? Roll call?
Baikman?
Yes.
B. Singer?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Echus?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Troller?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
It's eight zero.
All right. Next item, we have Austin.
All right. The only item on my list, listed on my, uh, report was the financials. Uh, good news is that we are now within $13,117 of, uh, last year's, um, general fund, uh, balance. Uh, we're still working on, um, finding cuts and, uh, saving money so we can get back to where we need, uh, where we once were. Um, the water fund is now 220 over last year, uh, 220,000 over last year's fund, and, uh, sewer is within, is a little, um, is 8,000 under what last year's, uh, fund balance was, but it's still climbing, and it's, it's climbing regularly. Uh, other, and other, in, in the project cost, Carolina Street behind Casey's has been completed, as, um, North Street and 11th Road were completed, so that was in my project cost, uh, financials.
The Carolina Street, we didn't have any additional costs, did we, other than what was...
No, and, um, we're still waiting on the bill for that, and it sh, and, uh, if it worked out right, it should be less than...
The fifty-six?
Than the fifty-six.
Okay.
It's nice, uh...
It does, yes. Very nice.
It's very nice. Nice looking down.
By the Veterans Memorial.
Yep.
Um, any questions on that?
I would just like to say kudos to everybody who worked to put these budgets together, because there were some people who were kinda having, putting out some scares in the community that because we hadn't gone out for loans, that we were using monies that we had. I think we've been very prudent with this money, and, uh, it looks like we're, you know, pretty well maintaining, and just like this water fund now is $220,000 over last year. So I think that, uh, it's good projections, and it's, it's good work on our behalf and on the supervisor's behalf, keeping an eye on the bottom line and staying within the budget.
Right. Um, something I didn't have on the agenda, uh, was the lease agreement, uh, and I put that out for the crop testing. Uh, I talked with Sky Tech or Farmers Cooperative, uh, and, uh, set out some of the guidelines to this, filled in some of the blanks. Uh, we agreed to $700 per year, uh, that we have this agreement, that they would pay us. Additionally, they would also pay for the water they use, which is at, at, uh, commercial, bulk water rates is $1 per 100 gallons. Uh, and, uh, he also said, um, he filled in the, uh, bond rating of the $1,000, they'd provide a $1,000 bond, um, and then provide, uh, insurance for $100,000 for, um, employees and $300,000 for bodily injury caused by their, their means. Uh, so this is just to show you that they filled in the blanks and to approve the mayor to sign off on this contract. Yeah, uh, also, uh, to possibly, uh, if somebody else wants to come to us and have the same sort of agreement to move forward on something like that. If you agree to these, we can agree to others as well.
Yeah, we, we approved the draft, but since they filled in the amount, I thought you guys should take a look at it, make sure you're okay with it.
The paragraph one, lease premises, that what his X's are, is supposed to be a legal description of real estate.
That's easily fixed, even though, if they understand where they're...
I would imagine they understood.
Yeah.
What, what we're talking about.
I'll fix that.
Then we'll just initial it?
Yeah.
Or have him initial it?
I'll sho, I'll show it to them and, and pass it through them, yep.
So, E, we still wanna motion to approve it for my signature?
Move to approve the Sky Tech lease agreement with the change noted on paragraph one, and, uh, authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Oh, that's how I missed it. Where does it say about trash and stuff?
Usually when they bring those big bulk containers in there, there isn't a whole lot of trash, so I'll put in...
Well, I'd rather have that in place, just in case.
Well, if you look at, um, item six, use of premises, paragraph C, uh, in consideration of the granting of the rights herein, Lisi agrees to perform the rights and privileges granted hereunder in accordance with HFAA and LISA rules, uh, without limiting the general that Lisi will, uh, such Lisi specifically, will keep the premises designated for Lisi neat, safe, and sanitary in all respects.
Oh, work.
Are you okay with that, Keith?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hado? Thank you very much. Is that it? I was gonna ask you, do, are you prepared to ask for a selection committee for that TA project? You put that in your highlights?
Oh, yeah, um...
Is that something that needs to be done now?
Uh, we can, or we can, 'cause what's the next meeting, the next one?
On the 24th?
Oh, I'll give it to you. Um, 'cause I'm collecting them on the, we can do it now or we can do it next meeting, because I'm collecting, I gave them till the 21st, so I can have all that information...
For the engineers?
Yeah, I can have all that information, and we can set a date, um, but if some people wanna volunteer, that's, this time, let's be...
Okay. Do you wanna explain what, they, you guys all know what I'm talking about?
The...
From the highlights?
Uh, construction engineering for the, uh, crosswalks. Uh, we decided to opt and, and, uh, do a qualifications-based, um, search, uh, for our construction engineering inspectors. Um, so I submitted, or I sent, uh, sent to six different engineers, uh, a request for their interest into the project, and, um, so we'll get the interest back, uh, have a committee evaluate, um, what they're, they submitted, and then, uh, choose from...
I think last time, didn't we use the street committee?
Yeah.
When I think, when we did it before?
Yeah.
Wasn't the street committee?
Yeah.
Are you okay with that?
That's fine.
Okay, so we'll just have the street committee do that? Plus me?
Okay.
Okay. City clerk?
What's tonight?
All right. So going on to standing committees, we have street?
Um, yeah. We've talked a little bit about curb and gutter at the budget meeting, but, um, I know maybe two years ago now, we did the gutter in front of the old courthouse, store courthouse. I don't know, I believe our intention was to eventually work on towards the west. It's a pretty big lip there in front of the new courthouse, and that's a pretty heavily trafficked area, a lot of cars come and go. Is that kind of on our list?
How far did we go down yet? I'm trying to remember, how far we got?
We did, I think, probably about to the west wall of the old courthouse.
So about a third of that block?
Yeah, I'd say maybe a third. And it's really nice, 'cause it has that sand, uh, sandstone, it's sandstone curb along there, so they pretty much just did the gutter, and I think they did out the, the brick probably three feet, so that it'd come out level. Um, it looks really nice, and it's not a tripping hazard, and, I don't know, it seems like we should probably finish that when we, when we start to go around, and I know you're making kind of lists of that stuff, so, just to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, probably, I put it on, maybe after Chippin Seal? Chippin Seal's gonna be most, most of the month of July, right?
Yeah. It could be a backroom project, but I know it's been a couple years since we did the third, so it's probably...
It's probably a good idea, yeah. And you're right, it's a high-traffic area, and...
A lot of out-of-towners, you may not be used to it.
Yeah. So...
Yep.
Put that on the street list.
Okay.
Anything else? Water, wastewater?
Yeah. How come it's taken us so much time to get to water leaks? Are our crews up busy?
Um...
We got one up here on 14th Street, it's been leaking for about three weeks now.
That's been in discussion with the owner of that, that line.
It's getting worse, it's going down, running down the street, down 15th Street.
Why can't we just cap, dig it up and cap it then, if it's, if it's that big of a deal?
We, we are. In fact, the owner finally decided on what they wanted to do, uh, and, uh...
I just got a problem with a leak going for three weeks.
I know.
Plus it went a month before.
And, uh...
About a month ago, it went a month before that.
Yeah.
It's the first time.
We fixed it three or four times, uh, previously. It is supposed to be a private line, uh, so what we're going to do is we're gonna dig it up and we're gonna, um, cap it off, but we're going to put a, um, the, um, connection out front, uh, where it should be, off of the new main that's out front of, of their house.
On Walnut Street.
Yeah, on Walnut Street.
So when are we gonna do this?
Um, we got the locates in, and the plan was for, to do it this week, as long as the boring, uh, people are ready to go.
This week? That's good. You know, somebody asked me about that hole by the post office, they asked me why that hole stays so long. What's the deal?
That part, we are, we are busy, we need to, um, uh, that, we've been meaning to get to that project, but, uh, we get busy, and then all of a sudden, holidays come around, and then we, uh, get busy again. There, the intention is to get right back to it, but it's, it's one of those things.
The problem is that's a highly traveled area, so people go by and say...
They see it.
They see it over and over again, yeah. So, um, as soon as they get done with that leak, maybe they can work on that? Okay.
Can I jump back to street for a second?
Sure.
Um, I asked at the last meeting about, one of the things to address with, um, Hall Brothers was the transition on North Street between the concrete and the asphalt?
Mm-hmm.
'Cause they hadn't striped or anything at that point. Um, did they, did you mention that to them? I noticed they didn't do anything as far as trying to cut it, it's...
I still gotta talk, I still gotta talk to them about some other things.
That's someone at 20th Street, right?
I'll bring them back.
Oh, yeah, just, just east, east of, uh, Frank Marshall Drive.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a pretty good home.
I think it's getting worse. I don't know if it do.
Okay. I don't know if it's pushing up or what, but, yeah.
I, I will ask them about it again.
Parks and Rec. Um, uh, the only thing I wanted to ask you guys, if you wanted to, uh, the swimming pool manual, you know, he put in his highlights, we were talking about why the pool was closed, 70 degrees. You wanna go ahead and reiterate what you found out from Red Cross?
I initially thought, 'cause this is how I learned it all along, is that, uh, Red Cross had a, a standard, but they don't wanna sign on to a standard, uh, but basically, uh, to keep... The temperature that I've found, um, was about 72 degrees, or whatever, uh, or 75 in some cases when the sun's shining, or something like that, I forget what I put in.
It was cloudy.
When it's cloudy, 75 when it's cloudy, 70 when it's, when it's, uh, sun's shining. Uh, so, I guess I found one or two places that, that had that, um, standing, uh, when there's no actual national standard to go off.
There's no requirement.
No requirement. Um, the initial question was why do we keep it open for the adult swim versus why do we hold it, uh, close it when, when it's regular swim hours? The lap swim, adults are in the pool the whole time, swimming and going back and forth. To top that off, they're adults, they can make decisions for themselves. Uh, if they wanna swim in that weather, they can swim in it. When the kids are swimming, there's a mandatory 15 minutes, they have to be out of the pool.
That's true.
So they are held to the extreme weather on, uh, ma, on purpose, uh, so to take that chance. They are also getting out of the pool, running up the slide, waiting in line, going down the slides, and all that stuff. So that adds on to it. They're, they're not adults, they're 12 and under, and, and for them to go, "All this is really cold, I wanna stop having fun," is kind of a challenge. Um, so, we as, as the pool moderators, or owners, if you will, uh, have to make a decision on, on when to hold that open, so our policy is usually held, um, for the normal swim time when we do, 'cause we don't allow the kids to do the lap swim, so it's normal swim hours, I think that, that's why we hold the policy that way.
So you guys okay with the policy as it is? I just wanted to follow up from last meeting. Okay.
Hold up, hung back a park, wanna thank Ryan and the crew up at Lakeview. They had that 32-team tournament up there last Saturday, and then carried through Sunday, and then into two, or Thursdays, and they, a lot of people in town with it, and just a great crowd, so...
And I heard all good things about the tournament, too, so, thanks for mentioning that. Okay.
I still have something for Parks and Rec. Uh, since the city approached us a year ago, I mean, not the city, the school approached us a year ago about having a second batting cage, they wanted a second batting cage at Lakeview. You guys remember that?
Mm-hmm.
And since they got this four million extra dollars...
I know they're into... You're not gonna put it...
Why don't we go ahead and approach them, that, yeah, and tear down the old one and put two, two new ones facing north and south, and make the, that, uh, concrete area handicap accessible?
You know what I, I think they're gonna say? It's on city property, and they probably will say they can't use it.
Well, I mean, that's, they wa, they approached us on that.
I know, I'm just, I, I heard that's the reason, I heard it that, I didn't go to that meeting on the excess funds, but I heard that, um, somebody asked about the tenant's courts, and they said it's not on their property, so they cannot do it, but they might have some other kind of capital outlay, and we can always appro, approach them and ask them if they're interested, maybe they would like to fund it, is that what, you would like us to communicate?
Yes.
Okay, Austin, you can communicate that to the school.
Well, and I was not able to go to that meeting either, and no one addressed parking, additional parking for the school, for the high school.
I did address it at the previous, regularly scheduled meeting, but I couldn't attend at nine either.
They didn't even, uh, I wasn't at that meeting, but they didn't even talk about if they moved the Ag building over, that that would be parking? They didn't, do you know if they said that? Anybody? Was anybody there?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, none of us got to go, okay. Okay.
'Cause I think we still have to make a handicap accessible somewhere down there.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Uh, cemetery and airport, police and fire? The only thing I wanted to know is, in the, in our information packet, there was that grant, it said wildland PPE, what is that?
That's what David applies every year.
Every year?
And he, he usually gets it.
Is it equipment?
Yeah, it's for, what is he usually?
For the suits, for the...
Suits?
Yeah.
Fire suits?
Fire gear.
And they, they usually split a five, $5,000, so we pay 2,500, they pay 2,500, um, but
what it, I think he said they went above, above, and above that number for us this year.
I don't know if this goes under police and fire or what, but, uh, I think these need to be taken care of.
Well, do you understand the, the sheet?
Nuisance sheets.
Do you understand? I'm sorry, I went to grab...
I thought, I thought the chief said that they go around and they, they, they'd look at them properties and turn them in to him, but they ain't turning very many in. You can drive around town and see a lot of them right now.
There's a lot of them on here.
Yeah. They're insane.
They're insane.
The only thing that this doesn't show, am I correct, that this doesn't show if we took any action, right?
Says a letter.
I know, but we sent a letter and then this says what the deadline is, and this says if it was... It has return receipt. So, it tells us if we received the return receipt or if the letter was returned unopened. But I don't think it communicates to us what action the city did.
Debbie, am I correct? After we send that letter, they have X amount of days to comply? And then if they don't comply, we can go in?
Well, I think that's why the deadline is listed there. The key thing is, like, after May first, did we do anything, which we don't know? That's what you want to know?
And the date on this ends at June thirteenth. Doesn't even run through the end of the month.
Right. Because of vacation and other projects. Phil Field, the U T A was up there working on Phil Field for...
So, I think that it would be nice if it shows... There was an additional column to show what action the city took. Do you agree on this?
Yes.
So, we know whether or not they resolved it or if we had to do it. I think that's one thing we would like, okay? So, add maybe a column on it or something.
The title says danger structures, but I don't see a column for that.
No.
Would that be under nuisance?
Nuisance, the...
I'm just wondering. I know danger structures is probably a different process.
There's some garages around town that look pretty bad in different spots.
I think this is a start. I think it's great that we've got this.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Admin and Finance. Okay. Appointments and Waiters. I would like to appoint Joy Kramer to the Convention and Tourism Committee. Her term would be January twenty, seventeen to January twenty twenty. She would be replacing Kenny Sells.
Remove to approve the mayor's appointment of Joy Kramer?
Uh-huh. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? And thank you, Kenny Sells, for your service. He's been on that committee a long time and he's been chairman, so thank you, Kenny. He says he's out of town too much. Oh, I shouldn't say that. Okay. City Attorney.
The listed agenda item is a little attachment from the League of Municipalities regarding the new House Bill two-three-oh-one that was enacted into law on July one regarding the Kansas Open Meetings Act. Not necessarily huge changes, I guess, really, I guess substantively or otherwise. And I was happy to see from the minutes of the last meeting that I think this council did it, actually pursue it to the new language. And really, what I think they did as this state, maybe, and I've read it in the number, they codified best practices. So, you know, credit to Marysville City Council, I think, was employing best practices and has been, you know, here recently, and that is to specifically state the subject matter that's going to be talking about, not necessarily specifically if there's privacy concerns, if we're talking about an employee, for instance, you don't identify that employee, but that you are going to talk about an employee's performance. Whereas before, I think the statute was unclear as to requiring governing bodies to actually state that specific. Instead, they would just say, "We're going into an executive session under this exception and we're not going to say anything more about it." And so, this was, I think, to provide for more transparency, I think was the public policy behind it. So, I just want you to take note. Basically, do what you've been doing. Do what you did in the last executive session. It follows their tips of the new procedure to a T. And also, the language, although really, you know, my new, I think directs governing bodies or anybody subject to the coma to only convene day executive session on one topic, unfortunately. It used to be you could do multiple if you stated it. Now, I think with the statute, the way they changed it, they kind of changed it from plural to singular to where you need to go back. Now, you could probably talk about multiple employees under that same exception, but you couldn't do that. And another exception, a completely different executive session, you have to come back, then go back into executive session, I think, to be... Air on the side of caution, I think that's what that changed. I don't know if that was his intent, but I think is the result of it. So, just a couple changes to that. A lot, I mean, it's one of many new laws that were enacted on July one, but as it pertains to municipalities, it's one to take note of. As we were just sitting here, just did a quick search for, under the Animal Health Code, and there's a couple statutes. It's Chapter forty-seven is livestock and domestic animals. I know the Kansas statute's annotated. And then, looks like Article six is protection of domestic animals. And it talks about killing of unconfined disease or exposed animals. And so, I think it's a... As Austin alluded to, it's case by case. It depends on what the state of the animal is, when it died or is euthanized and it's diseased, how the certified vet or pounder, whoever it is that's taking care of that animal, will choose to kill it and what it will do with its carcass. And the statutes do point to what they're allowed to do under forty-seven-one dash one-two-one-one. It talks about the disposal of carcasses and there are rules and statutes in that particular statute that say what requirements they have to follow to do that, the machinery that they have, it has to meet certain requirements, too. So, in a brief, quick look into the statutes, I think you're going to want to look under Chapter forty-seven. I'm happy to look even further, but that would be what they're following here locally in every municipality or county that's in charge of disposing of and euthanizing animals. Don't know if it answers your question.
Well, like I said, there were several animals. And what I was looking at, I was going over the financials, and what I was looking at was the bill and the invoice. And so, their concern was to make sure we understood what we were being billed. And this kitten was brought in because he'd been hit by a car. And it didn't say anything about it being diseased. They charged thirty dollars to treat the animal and then fifty dollars to euthanize the animal. And it didn't say anything about disease. To cover us, if we are required to cremate a diseased animal, should we make sure that we have that on the... Have it listed as a matter of practice? Because there were like five other animals and they weren't cremated. So, if one of them says it's been cremated or taken care of in a special way, should we have that written somewhere so we're covered, that we have properly disposed of an animal that's possibly diseased?
Well...
Didn't say why they did.
It's, yeah, it's governed by state law. And I think maybe, you know, if necessary or go talk to this outfit, I don't know if there is more than one here, why their practices are the way they are, what statutes they're following, make sure they're in compliance with state law, with Animal Health Board as well, because that's who's really governing it.
You can always ask the vet to just identify why they cremated it, just they could say diseased, and we would know what they're following in that code, just so we know that they're making that discretionary call, right?
Yeah. And from a financial standpoint, if you feel like maybe fund, the city has put the bill for things that don't have to happen, I mean, you first need to figure out why it happened on that particular case and then...
And if it's documented, it's kind of a... You'll know now if it says diseased, why they did it. So, just clarification.
Make sure they're not doing it arbitrarily. I don't see anything wrong with checking into that and then coming back and seeing if it's in compliance with state law or not.
Okay. And thanks for looking into it. Is there anything else?
Oh, no, I don't have anything else.
Okay.
Can I ask for a container ordinance or we deny?
The intermodal container.
Yeah.
That's on me to move forward, and I need to present something to Austin or, I guess, Austin and Dave to look through and then present it. My goal is to get it here the next time I'm here, which will be maybe not the next meeting, but the meeting after, if not sooner, if I don't know that I necessarily have to be here. Looking into it, the way that our... The way that the ULDC is, you know, I don't know how efficient or practical it is, it's just, you know, reprint a new one. It might be easier, but what has been proposed, it's adding to a number of disparate sections in that ULDC. Other municipalities have just done an ordinance that doesn't state exactly the new language. I don't know that we can do it. I think we have to state the new language, which there's a lot, there's going to be a lot of new language added. And so, it's a bit of a project to do all of that. It's not as simple as maybe I think we originally thought, but I want to do it as efficiently as possible, but also cost-saving, too. Print out brand-new ULDCs rather than maybe inserting supplements. I think the latter might be more efficient and cost-saving. Thank you for asking that. Thank you.
Is there a ULDC on the website?
I think it is. I think it is on the website.
They put the inserts in there fairly easily and keep it updated online at least.
I don't know if it is. I'm not positive on that.
Okay. All right. We do need to go into executive session. It's seven-fifty, so about fifteen minutes, so that would take us to eight oh five. You have the motion right here that we need to make. Exactly, the new procedure is exactly what we need to say. And we probably need it to go to eight oh five. And Craig, do you want to come into the meeting with us?
I certainly can.
Okay. So, the motion should include him.
Move to go into, move the city council recess into executive session to discuss... Is it individual employee department? Okay. Pursuant to the non-licentious personnel matter exception, KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one. The open meeting will resume in the city council chamber at eight oh five. Executive session to include city administrator?
No. City attorney?
City attorney. Council, mayor and city attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
(inaudible) Plus, it wasn't Vicki.
I made that motion.
But it wasn't your idea, so.
Nick Pichter? Nick Pichter?
It's cold out there.
Pete's in the brownies, remember that? I think after the meeting, they should go to refrigerator or to the department. How do you want to do it? That was a little...
(inaudible).
Oh, thank you.
I'm not sure what.
(inaudible).
Call this meeting back to order. There were no binding decisions made in executive session, and we will return to regular session. For roundtable discussion, I wanted to congratulate Clayton Hizzle. Hills. For his Eagle Scout project at the library. It looks excellent. Yep.
What was that?
The Eagle Scout project at the city library.
And what did he do?
He painted those books on the west side.
On the mutual.
On the Marysville mutual. So, he did a great job. And Fourth of July was a great event and day in Marysville. We had so many activities going on, very well participated, and we had wonderful fireworks. I was very proud of our fireworks display. So, I think they did a great job. And our prayers and thoughts go out to Bill Mullins, who is in Houston tonight, that his results come in well tomorrow. Superintendent Bill Mullins. And I think I had one more, but I can't find my agenda packet, so moving along. Keith?
I don't have anything.
Bill?
I don't either.
Well, I might mention that the last concert of the community band will be this Thursday at seven-thirty. And everybody should take a look at the library pocket park with the new mural.
That's what I was talking about, the new mural. But, yeah, the community band concert, we've gone a couple times, and they do an excellent job, so that's a good thing to bring up for our community. Anything else?
No.
Brad?
Was the other thing on your list, maybe the letter we had about the fireworks at Dargatz? No? We don't want to discuss that tonight.
Well...
Austin says no. I thought we should talk about it.
I think what happened, I mean, I'll just give you a brief scenario. We had a resident complain about the fireworks at Dargatz Park. And what that did is, we had a meeting between the fire chief, David Richardson, and the police chief, Todd Ackland, and Austin and I, and we looked at her concerns. We checked with the International Fire Code to make sure we were doing everything in accordance with that. And the chief called the Kansas Fire Marshal to make sure we were doing everything in accordance with that. And as long as the... As long as fireworks are rated at one-point-three that are being sold at a stand, they are, they can be shot off anywhere in the city. Did I cover that? Is there anything else?
Basically, we didn't have to watch it. We don't have to... We're not required to watch after them because they're not commercial fireworks.
They're not required to have a permit. One of the questions is, she thought they should have to have a permit, and the second thing was that we had allowed it, and it didn't come as one of the waivers. So, it was a good learning experience, understand what the fire code is, what our city codebook says. It's a learning experience whenever we have a resident be concerned. And so, I just took it as a good opportunity to learn more.
So, this is kind of just informational? That's why I didn't know?
Just to know, and, you know, actually, we didn't know who had been contacted, and this is just so you know what was distributed to this individual.
Follow-up on that, though. So, on the waivers that we... The groups that did approach us, should we be specifying to them that it has to be these required? Because we're assuming that they're shooting legal fireworks, right?
To get the fireworks that are commercially owned, David kind of filled us in on the process. It is, since nine eleven, extremely hard and a strenuous process to get the commercial fireworks that are shot off at Lakeview for the city event.
And that require permit?
They require permits, they require background checks and so on and so forth.
Don't you have to have a license?
You have to have it, yep.
Permit, a license and a fire truck.
And buy different fireworks than I can buy here. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And it's not illegal for somebody to shoot those fireworks off in Kansas?
That's what I... That's what my thought is.
We... I guess it's our position that we don't have a, I guess, a fireworks... That'd be like an ATF or a... I mean, hate to pass the buck, but we don't have the standing to go around and check everybody's fireworks.
No, that's fine. I'm just saying, when we've approved, I'm not suggesting everybody's, but when we've given somebody a fruit, literally signed off and said, "You can shoot..."
Put some verbiage in it.
I guess we could say something that says, "You will discharge this level of fireworks."
Yeah. It just because, to me, it feels, I just thought about that after we had approved a couple of those and hearing some of the clearly are not, you know, something I can go up here to this, Dave, even Dave's stand and buy that...
Well, we found out, we as a city have adopted the International Fire Code, which is different than what you can sell in Kansas. So, we learned that those things like sky lanterns that float in the air, they're not allowed in the International Fire Code, but you are allowed to sell them in Kansas. So, because of that, the people that have fireworks and sell fireworks in Marysville need to communicate to the buyers, you cannot discharge these in Marysville. They can sell them. It's not against the law to sell them. It's against the law to send them off untethered. And so, that was something else we learned in the process. So, it's a learning experience.
That's only once a year.
Yes.
The only other thing I had was, I think we had a really good Fourth of July, it seems like, around Marysville. I didn't hear of any really bad incidents. I know the trail had a good group out there, and we had a good group, the Depot for the Road Rally, and the fireworks were great. There's the squirrel interpretive site. Am I saying that correctly? Unveiling was well-attended.
Yes.
It's been really nice. I've heard compliments about that. So, I think, you know, the community really did a good job.
We're very fortunate.
Absolutely.
Vicki?
That is.
That's it.
Mayor, did you say that that Eagle Scout did that painting himself in the pocket park by the library?
Uh-huh.
He did that himself.
Well, I saw him painting.
He had some help.
I saw him painting a lot, though, with the spotlight on, so I don't know what the Eagle Scout requirements are.
Well, they have to be in charge.
Okay.
That was one well-done. I didn't know who had done it. I couldn't remember how it was brought about, but there isn't a professional that could have put that together or ended up with a finished product. It is beautiful. If anybody hadn't been down there to see it, they really should go. And if you have a chance, get by the Lee Dam Art Center. We have a new exhibit going on. I'm going to be doc-itting there on Saturday, but we always, generally, we bring to the public local, sometimes they're high schoolers, sometimes they're just local people taking photographs or doing interpretive art or painting or material crafts. We just have some really talented people locally that distribute here, and if you've got some time, it's always free. You can make a donation if you want to, but it's a nice way to spend a few minutes and just get a different perspective on things by looking at the way somebody has interpreted their version of art.
Current exhibit's all photography, though, by two Kansas photographers, Scott Bean and I can't think of the gentleman's name, but it's... He's got, they've got a fairly decent, very nice...
I'll probably like them.
Yeah.
Kansas photography.
It's very, it's Kansas photography. It shows county, and it tells you where they are, so, which is a lovely glass, so...
You can't go to art museums in bigger cities and go in there for nothing, for free. I mean, it's just really a wonderful place just to spend a few minutes. And I didn't have any idea until the Fourth of July, all the things that were going on the Fourth of July, that different organizations put on air. I know that Todd and his wife, Rachel, put a lot of time into the clues at the Road Rally Point. Were there a hundred and twenty-one clues or something like that?
Something like that.
It was big. It was well-attended. There were couples, I didn't even know these people were friends. There'd be two in the front seat and two in the back just having a good old time. A lady, she had one of her children in a baby seat in the back, and they were having a good time. And I thought, what a great way to spend the Fourth of July is doing this rally. And there were same... There were children that rode the 23 miles, was it, to the state line and back on our Blue River Rail Trail, is that what it's called, Blue River Rail Trail? It was wonderful seeing those people coming back. They were tired, but what a sense of accomplishment they had. The last ones coming in was a mother and child. And I mean, the two of them, this is an event and this is something they got to do together that they'll never forget. It's just, we do so much here for our people and anybody else who wants to come in and partake in our community. I'm very proud to be from here, very proud.
And she's right. And there were a lot of people this year, I thought, especially from out of town. Nebraska, a lot of Nebraska plates.
Leonardville?
Leonardville, Manhattan.
People are coming here because they don't have it in their town or they don't have it as nice as our town does.
Well, speaking of that, I heard in the Topeka paper, they had Marysville as the best place to go in Kansas for 4th of July.
Yay!
And I was like, my sister from Topeka called me and said, "Did you know Marysville was listed?" Sounds like that's pretty cool.
Well, and we had a TV station from Blue Rapids.
Beatrice.
Blue Rapids, pardon me. Yes, yes, Beatrice, Nebraska. They came across the line to photograph and make a news program out of what Marysville is doing for 4th of July, I guess to inspire other towns to do, but we're making the news. So very proud of Marysville. Thank you.
All right. Denny? Kevin?
Yeah, I just got one concern. The Belfry over here on Ninth and Center, that east wall keeps falling in on it. Can we get them to put a barricade or something up around that in case more of that falls? I'd hate to have some little kid over there playing.
On the east side?
On the east side.
Even just put snow pants along the highway side.
It needs to be sectioned off. I just hate to have some little kid in there pull a brick and that whole thing, the way it's sliding off.
You know which building that is? Behind Commerce Bank? Okay, is that all? Okay. That being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You really don't feel...
No. 8:17.